So, next we have the Urbana City Council meeting, the regular city council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item of business is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting, June 2nd, 2014.
So move.
Motion by Ammons?
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications, and we have a presentation from Ryan Peters on medical cannabis pilot program. Ryan, would you like to come forward? And if you could do it in five minutes, that would be good, and then we'd have some time for some questions.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I appreciate your time. Just one second.
You might want to speak into the microphone.
Better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me all right? All right.
Oh, is that?
Thank you again. To begin with, I'll keep my part of this presentation short. I'm sure you have way more questions than I could address directly and anticipate. My name is Ryan Peters. I'm a commercial broker representing a client from Indiana that wishes to open a medical marijuana dispensary here in Urbana, Illinois. I'm by no means an expert in this area, and I'm not here to debate the value or uses of medical marijuana. I would just like to present the opportunity my clients are bringing to Urbana. We have identified a number of potential sites within the city that would make ideal locations for such a facility, but my client does not wish to just drop a shop in the middle of town. Their goal is to enlist the help of the community in deciding not only a location, but also if we are right for the town. Our goal here today is to present a little bit about the facility, and then open up questions to help the public understand these drastic changes in policy. What matters here today are the benefits we can bring to Urbana. To begin with, additional revenue streams, as you've seen in states such as Colorado, as well as additional tax revenue. Massachusetts, for example, has increased the local sales tax on medical marijuana above the state standard. We also plan to help benefit the community through charitable contributions in addiction recovery and substance abuse. We also want to keep the community involved through this community advisory board, which will help initially help us determine where we want to locate the store, and then from there charitable areas that we can help to contribute and benefit the city. The main thing my clients have asked me to present is that this is not a head shop. We're not looking to post neon signs of pot leaves in the windows. There won't be any murals on the exterior of the building. This is a completely professional storefront retail center with within appearance and practice. There's going to be no stickers on the products. Everything will be prepackaged at cultivation locations off-site. There will also be an isolation between rooms for security purposes. You'll be greeted into a reception area with a security kind of checkpoint on the side. Before anyone can even access the dispensary, they'll be checked in through a receptionist. From the dispensary areas, there will be separate inventory rooms as well as a vault. The main thing is that onsite security will be there during all hours of operation, and we feel that this will be an adequate supply to make sure that all of our patients are safe and things of that nature. From here, I really just want to open it up to questions. I'm sure you have way more than, like I said, I could anticipate, so...
Would you like to summarize the state law that you're acting under?
Sure. Basically, a dispensary must be located 1,000 feet from any school, daycare, or such location. It also cannot be located in a residential zone. Any additional restrictions come down to a local judgment. Cultivation centers are a totally different point of contention, but I'm not here to represent any type of cultivation center. We're just merely looking to open a dispensary, which is a retail store. I do have some examples of interior pictures of sister dispensaries that have been worked through with the consultant of my client, as well as other upstanding dispensaries that they're looking to really base their project on. As you can see here, this is a sister company based out of California. This is very much the same. You'll have an inventory area at the back of the dispensary that will connect to an inventory room that cannot be accessed through the main dispensary. That way, there's no interaction between the product. It'll go right into these little nooks, if you will. Another view of a similar store, same consultant. And then these are some of the upstanding cultivation centers throughout. As you can see, these are highly professional medical facilities. They're not looking to open green fields or any type of head shop in the area. Clean and contemporary. So, please, I guess that's a good place to start. Yes?
Diane? How many customers would they anticipate on a daily basis?
You know, they're still in the projecting stage on a state level. State officials have said tens of thousands of, not local, but state qualifying patients. Estimates from professionals is in the 10,000 to 15,000 range, so it's really hard to say at this point. There are several qualifying conditions that are restricted compared to other markets. Chronic pain and insomnia, which account for 90% of medical marijuana patients in other states, are not qualifying conditions in Illinois. So, at this point, it's all just stipulation. I, like I said, I am here to represent the building. I don't know exactly what patient load would look like.
Dennis?
So, this is pretty vague, obviously. What are you really trying to accomplish? Are you trying to find out whether the city of Urbana would be interested in this kind of an event? Are you going to proceed whether the council's particularly interested in it or not because you're operating a retail establishment? And when are, you know, it would be difficult to comment further without any knowledge or really substantial information about the store, its operation, its procedures. I mean, this is really vague.
I understand that. Yeah, we are in to get an initial feel for the city and what they want. If we're rejected at this point, we'll go look somewhere else. It's believed that the application process will begin late summer through the state. A company can only have five dispensaries across the entire state, so to limit yourself to a market that doesn't want you would be foolish at this point. Obviously, we have a few potential locations within the city that they've flagged an interest in, but we're not going to pursue anything until I know whether the city is on board with what we planned. I know there were a couple parts. Was there anything I forgot to touch on?
Eric?
So, I'm assuming, but I'll ask, all of the customers will be people who have prescriptions that have been written either by physicians, or I guess by clinical psychologists, because clinical psychologists will now be able to write prescriptions in Illinois.
Correct. At this point, you have, there has to be a past relationship with the doctor in Illinois, so patients can't walk into a corner drugstore or a corner doctor's office and get a prescription. There has to be some type of basis for that relationship.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so a follow-up question. Do you have a sense already of whether our local healthcare providers are likely to be writing prescriptions for medical marijuana?
I have seen support on a local level. To say that the entire local market is on board would be overreaching. I do feel that there, this was a fantastic market for my clients to look in because of past regulation within the city. It's more of a progressive city in this area. There's several medical campuses nearby, and that's what drew us to this location, to start the process of looking.
Anyone else? Diane?
So, if there's only five allowed in Illinois, this is actually a regional dispensary, or this would be a regional dispensary?
Did I say five? There's...
Five per company, but there are going to be 60 in the whole state, right? Is it two per state police district?
There are 60 throughout the entire state. District 10, which is where we're at, is allowed two for the entire district, which is roughly nine counties, I believe, maybe 10. I don't have that number in front of me. Areas like District 6, which is Bloomington-Normal, is allowed one. Areas like Will County is allowed three. Cook County is allowed 16. So, within the city of Chicago, obviously, they'll have far more. So, as you can see, it's kind of sporadically distributed throughout the state. But yeah, there's going to be a very limited number of licenses issued within this district, and it would be more of a regional license.
Eric?
So, since you're looking for feedback, I'll just give my personal feedback. I agree with the law. I agree with the purpose of it, and I think it's reasonably well-drafted. And I am just one person, but I would be happy for Urbana to be one of the places that would play a role in implementing this law.
Thank you for your support.
Anyone else? Carol Hammons?
I just had just two questions. One is Bradley Company is not the company, that's you.
No, indeed not.
And who is your client?
I can't reveal that.
Okay, you can't say who your client is. And the only, I'll just offer a comment, not necessarily a support for your client, but that I support the law, and I think the law actually probably should go further than it did. But there is an aspect of this whole thing that has to be dealt with, which is the criminal aspect, that some are actually going to prison over marijuana. And we can't be irresponsible in our community to not address that issue and, at the same time, make it a lucrative business for others. And so, I wish you the best, but I think that there is a lot more that needs to be done and considered in response to this.
We would agree.
Dennis?
So, I invite you to send a more detailed packet to us so that we could actually have some real facts before we, you know, continue making a discussion on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive, and our weekly moment of silence, if we could.
Weekly moment of silence.
I've placed before each of you, and a few people in the audience have, just a reminder of the 15th Annual Jettie Rhodes Neighborhood Day on Saturday, June 28th, and the city of Urbana has been a major supporter in the past for the last 15 years, so hopefully we can get the word out about that. And I've also sent you all email as well, so make sure that we keep that in mind. And then, of course, with the media here, and I see that our people are here from the area behind the VFW, the trailer park, I can't remember, is it Barnes Mobile Park? They're here again tonight, and I do thank, and just a word for the public, that when things are going on, and even when they're not, if we just stay on our representatives and let them know that we are listening, we are concerned, and get information to them, and if you can, come out to the meetings. Hopefully, they're not too, too long if you come, but just to stay on our representatives and let them know that we're behind them and are listening and need their support and insight. Thanks a lot.
Dennis has a question for you.
No, I don't, but I don't think it's the practice of the city council to initiate moments of silence, and I don't think it's appropriate for representatives coming forward from the community to try to impose that onto the community or the city council. So, I'd rather prefer that you would decide to represent a need for silence. You'd have to do it perhaps at your home or in your community, someplace else in the city building.
Okay, so then my three or five minutes or whatever, I can't, I can just, I can say moment of silence then?
Please don't ask, please don't ask the city council to participate in a spiritual practice.
That's fine. Not necessarily spiritual, but, okay. And I'll see if there's something, maybe you could, I'll send you an email, and then maybe you can explain further.
Okay, I think we all need to decide for ourselves how we respect...
Okay, and so you're speaking for yourself?
I certainly am, but I'm saying that I don't think that it's part of the city practice to turn over moments of silence and other moments of dedication expecting the entire community, including the city council, to do it to the public.
Well, that's totally up to you. I mean, if you don't do it, I don't know who does it or not, but I can use my three to five minutes for what I choose to.
For other useful city purposes, I think.
Okay, and also moments of silence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Lord. As of last week, we had a meeting regarding Barnes Mobile Home Park. Now, the stress is getting very hard on our families, our spouses. We're all arguing. We don't know what to do with ourselves. We need some answers, some shape, where form, not two weeks, three weeks. Winter's almost here, believe it or not. We're going into the seventh month. It going fast, and we need to know something. What is going on in our neighborhood? What is the counseling doing for us?
Have you talked with a staff member yet?
No.
Okay, we have our staff talking with people who live there, just to find out what your situation is and what you would like to see. So, we will be talking with you. That's what we're going to do, is find out what everybody would like and see how we can accommodate you.
Well, if they're already got paid and then got, you pay more for the land than what it's worth, wasn't that supposed to be for us to move?
I don't think we're committed to having you move. I've tried to make that clear. So, we are trying to see what all the options are and talk with each one of you, and then come up with a plan.
So, we're going to have to keep lingering every week to come here?
Well, I mean, this is, this is a city council, and we have to try to find out how to, how to, what the problem is and how we can solve it. There are more than one way to deal with it, and we want to listen to what you have to say, but we're going to have it done in a formal way, where you're going to talk with a staff person, and we're going to get your ideas.
Well, I gave them my ideas, and it's the same thing, and we're still not giving them...
Did you talk with somebody from the city?
To the city, it came out, and didn't ask nothing, really, just how long we lived there, so on, how old our trailers are.
Did they ask you if you want to move or if you want to stay?
No, they didn't ask that part.
Oh, well, that would be one of the questions that should be asked.
No, they asked a lot of questions to different people, too, their ages, and what's their disability, and what's their, you know, it's, like I say, we got to have some answers.
Okay, I understand that.
Because our families are walking on eggshells now.
Okay, I understand.
Our spouses are, we're up in uproar. We're always at each other's throats, and we can't keep disturbing our families with this.
Okay, we understand.
I hope you do, ma'am, because this is critical. This is really critical.
Yes, I, we understand that it's very important to you, and we want to do this right, and we want to involve you in whatever the solution is going to be, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bishop King and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood do not wish to speak. For the record, they're still concerned about the sewers in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Okay. Eric?
So, I just wanted to pass on a couple of constituent communications to me. And I'm going to preface this by saying that I have often been critical of Carl Clinic, but to be fair, if I have constituent input that's relevant, that's favorable to them, I feel obligated to pass that on. And these are two international students. One is from Pakistan, one is from China. And the students have very little money. Graduate students have very small stipends compared to normal salaries. And so, one of them needed medical care at Carl, the Pakistani student, and he was, Carl waived their fees. And another one had a more serious issue, a student from China whose father was visiting here and became very, very ill and needed extensive emergency care, and Carl provided that for free. So, they, and these students are very important to the economy. Graduate students are very important to the economy of Urbana. They provide a lot of the work on which the grant proposals are based that bring enormous amounts of money here from federal government, from the, from foundations, corporations, and so forth, the enormous research enterprise that it's a university. So, you know, I'll go back to beating Carl up, and I certainly believe they should pay their taxes, but I did want to, I did want to recognize this important positive role that they're playing in the community, because these students are networked. I mean, Pakistani, students from Pakistan are networked all across, universities all across the country. Students from China are networked all across the country, and so Carl is doing their bit to help us be an attractive destination for international students who really are important to us economically.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Carol.
I just wanted to ask, which staff member or which department is actually working with the Barnes Mobile Home Park people?
Community Development was doing the interviews.
And Mike Munson will, too?
Actually, their community development is doing the interviews right now.
Okay, well, we'll talk with them about it.
Their community development, okay.
Okay. Committee of the whole, that would be Carol.
All right. All right, Committee of the Whole moves resolution number 2014-05-027R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of promotional and marketing agreement, the Urbana Business Association fiscal year 2014-15 and fiscal year 2015-16, as well as 2016-17, and I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yeah, discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry, Diane, go ahead.
Just a comment. I, after much thought, I'm not going to be able to support this three-year agreement. And I have met with UBA director and the board treasurer and city staff members, and actually, some former members of the UBA board, and given us a lot of thought and have learned a lot about the organization over the past few months. And I do think that the new direction that the UBA wants to head in shows a lot of promise. However, I could support a one-year contract, I could support a multi-year contract if it was, if there was a zipper clause after the first year, but I just don't feel comfortable with an agreement that commits us to invest about $300,000 over a three-year period, given the financial uncertainties that we're still facing, particularly our labor contracts aren't settled yet, and I think we ought to be able, ought to try to maintain some financial flexibility. And also, 60-some percent of this funding comes from TIF I and TIF II, and I understand we're going to be having a study of the TIF districts this year, and I would like to see the recommendations of that study before committing to a multi-year expenditure of TIF funds. And finally, I'll go back again to our relationship with the Champaign County EDC, and we, at the last minute, told the EDC that we couldn't pay $19,000, which was half of the allocation for the current fiscal year because of our dire financial situation, and yet we're on the verge of committing $100,000 a year for the next three years in this agreement. And I have yet to hear an explanation that makes sense to me on this, and I just can't vote for something that doesn't make sense to me, so I'm not going to be supporting this agreement.
Anyone else? Bill?
Yeah, I wanted to say thanks for making the adjustments in the matching funds so that it does seem like that's a little bit more of an incentive to raise private funds and not be able to count in-kind contributions. I did wish the other part, the $50,000, $45,000, $40,000, could have started going down sooner. We have asked other departments to take cuts, but we're starting out with the same level of funding here. So, if, I guess if we amended it, it'd have to go back to you guys, but if anybody else was interested in amending it to increase that or decrease that by $5,000 each year, I would support that. And then, I guess where we fund it from, TIF I and TIF II, could be a problem in 2016 because TIF I ends in 2016, but I think that's right. But that will, I guess, be a budget issue for future years, but for this year, it seems like TIF I, TIF II might work. So, I'll probably support as is, but I would support a reduction if anyone else was interested. Sure, let's try it. I moved to amend it to reduce $5,000 each year, so it'd be 14, 15, it'd be 45, then 40, then 35.
So, I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts, to lower the amount each year by $5,000. Any discussion, Carol?
Yeah, I'll, I spoke a little bit about this, and we, I spoke to Charlie, too, before he left. My initial concern was similar to Diane's about continuing a three-year agreement without, a couple of things that's happening right now is we don't have, we don't have appropriate revenue to cover 911 services currently that we have to put out, which is somewhat close to what we're doing in this agreement. And there's no major incentive unless the reduction piece works right. There's no major incentive for us to do a three-year agreement. And so, just as a compromise, I'll support the resolution for the reduction. Otherwise, I would have voted no for the three-year contract. And so, my proposal then would be reducing it by $5,000. I could go along with that. Otherwise, I would vote no for the three-year contract.
Anyone else? Okay, we have an amendment by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, it seems like that motion carries. Now, with the resolution amended, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Carol?
Thank you. Committee of the Whole moves resolution number 2014-06... Oh, I'm sorry. As loud as I am, you can't... Resolution number 2014-06-033R, a resolution approving modifications to the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium fiscal year 2013-14, annual action plan, 301 Thompson and Community Elements, TBRA, and I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
We move to discussion for social service funding. I'll turn it over to Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, so, I haven't finished the spreadsheet number crunching, I apologize, but I can tell you, you're all going to be reasonably happy with the result, unless you don't want to spend any money on social services at all, because there wasn't a whole lot of, there weren't enormous discrepancies in people's priorities. So, we'll, and I will get that done in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the budget to vote on tonight.
So, the number I report to you will come out to the $295,000.
Okay, but that's, is that in the budget, the 295,000?
We talked about that.
Well, there's 195,000 in the budget. 100,000 is coming from the township.
Okay, so it's in the budget, but it's just not spelled out?
Right.
What items?
Yeah.
All right, Committee of the Whole moves resolution number 2014-06-034R, resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement and the existence and formation of the Illinois Law Enforcement's Alarm System, ILEAS, intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement mutual aid, and I so move.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Committee moves Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero five seven in ordinance of the City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, providing for the issuance of General Obligation Bonds, Series 2014, providing the details of such bonds, and for a levy of taxes to pay the principal of and interest on such bonds and related matters. And I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes, that motion carries.
Committee moves Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero five dash zero five three in ordinance approving the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System Annual Budget, 2014-15. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That's all from committee.
Do you want me to vote on it? Yeah.
Mayor pressing?
I vote yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Carol. Reports of special committees? I don't think we have any reports of officers. Um, you, Celeste, would you like to talk? Okay.
You have a handout? Oops, sorry. You have a handout there from the library. This is our 140-year celebration of the Urbana Free Library and our community. So, what I wanna say to the city on behalf of the library is thank you. Thank you for your support of your library for 140 years, for the great use of the library by its community. And we'd love to have you attending our 140-year anniversary events over the next year. The kickoff event is this Sunday from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. with a concert and birthday cake. Hopefully, we'll see you there.
Are you gonna have 140 events?
We just may.
Okay. Dennis?
Okay, I dig it. Uh, very exciting. Uh, we love the library. It's been one of the features of the downtown that's been always, uh, did, always indicated as the dedication of choice by, um, a lot of people in a lot of studies.
Mm-hmm.
I love the idea that you're celebrating your own, uh, anniversary, and, uh, it's a quality location. And I bet we're gonna have a lot of fun, and I think birthday cake is fine.
Thank you. We're celebrating the community's use of the library. It's not about us, it's about the community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero five eight in ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four three, increasing the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for Black Hawk Restaurant Group, um, doing business as Emma's Eatery, 114 Vine Street. Uh, oh, yes, Mr. Madigan.
Uh, state law precludes me as a liquor license holder from, uh, participating in, uh, new business agenda items one through four, so I will, uh, recuse myself.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Okay. Motion to approve, um, seconded by, by Roberts, seconded by Jacobson, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero five nine in ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four three, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for Hot Spot Restaurant, 1809 South Philo Road.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero six zero and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four three, increasing the cla, the number of Class C liquor licenses for La Moronita Mexican Store Incorporated, 607 North Cunningham Avenue.
I'll second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero six one and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four three. This is to increase the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for the Dancing Dog Eatery and Juicery LLC, 126 West Main Street.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, Ra, motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin, with a close third by Ammons. It's a second. Okay, any discussion? All those in, oh, no, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries. We then have Ordinance Number 2014 dash zero six dash zero six two and ordinance approving the annual budget. That is for fiscal 2014 to 2015. And Rich Henchel, our comptroller, is here, and we welcome back Mike Madigan. Mr. Henchel?
Good evening. This item is to approve the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2014-15. Over the course of several meetings in the past, all departments have presented their budgets and provided, in some instances, recommended modifications. The list of recommended modifications is provided with the ordinance. We are also intending to submit the budget to the Government Finance Officers Association for this distinguished budget presentation award program for the first time. These are guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on Stateal, State and Local Budgeting. With that, staff recommends that the budget be approved with a motion to approve the budget as amended with all the modifications as provided.
Okay, any questions for Rich, or does anyone wanna make a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna move, move that we do approve the annual budget as indicated.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Jacobson. Mr. Madigan?
I appreciate all the good work on this. Um, I do, uh, have a question, uh, Rich. So, with all of the modifications, what is the, um, what are the total expected revenues? And then, what are, what are, what are the total expenditures?
The modification sheet attached shows the change in a couple of revenue, revenue items, and most of the other changes are in expenses. For the items listed, the original total budget was a net of $618,000 in expenses. These modifications add an additional $136,000 for a total net change to the budget in its entirety of $755,000. I don't have with me the total revenue expense numbers after that.
Okay.
But what we will be producing is, once approved, excuse me, once approved, we will be publishing a final approved budget with the modifications included in there so you can see what those totals are. And I can get you those numbers before that's done as well.
Okay, so the 755 is, is 755,000 more in expenditures?
Uh, no, it's actually 135,000 more in the total expenditures, 136,963 dollars. That's the change in total expenditures. What the 755 is, is the total value of all these line items after the modification.
Okay. Let me ask it a different way. Are we gonna be spending more money than we're taking in?
Yes.
And what would that number be?
Currently, in the general fund, there's a budget deficit of 131,000. The changes in the do, budget here, these modifications, are 252,639. So, the total deficit in the general fund budgeted would be 383,694.
Okay. So, 383,000 deficit spending, not considering, uh, anticipated increases in, uh, in union, that will be the result of union negotiations?
That's correct.
Right.
So, we... Well, clearly, uh, yeah, we're gonna be amending the budget, and I'm sure that, uh, department heads are gonna be aggressively looking for savings throughout the year. I mean, I understand that's how it works. But, um, to start off this way, um, and to still consider some things, uh, in this budget, uh, supporting some things in this budget that are really not necessary city services or functions of city government, um, is just a real difficulty for me. I, uh, so I can't support the budget if it continues to contain, uh, the social service funding for this year. I think that program should be put on hiatus. I believe the public art program should be pared back, if not eliminated, this year. And, you know, with those things, we'd maybe be some, you know, halfway toward a goal of balancing the budget. So, you know, those are just a couple of things that are just very problematic for me this year. And I'm not trying to take away from, uh, all the hard work that I think the department heads are doing to, to try to, um, realize savings for the city. Uh, but we've got some significant budget pressures, uh, this year. And, and continuing to fund, uh, things that are not, uh, necessary city, uh, services or functions, um, I just believe is inappropriate i- in light of our, uh, in light of our economic circumstance. So, I will not be supporting the budget.
Anyone else? Bill?
Yeah, I'd support a reduction in social services funding 'cause it's, it is a deficit. Um, 383,000 plus, who knows, another two, 400,000 probably for, um, additional salary and last year's salary. I think the public arts program has been something that has been, has been built up over the past eight years, and it'd be a shame to throw that out. I know some of us urged the mayor to make it a part-time position when we had the opportunity and had the position open, and that wasn't, um, apparently in the works, so, um... About, about all there is to left, left to cut the public arts without cutting the whole program would be to cut some of the grants. And then, what does a public art person do if they don't have grants to work with? So, I don't know. I, I don't see, for, uh, the forty, 20 or 30,000 dollars, we might be able to save in that program this year. I just don't, don't see much hope there. But I would support, uh, a reasonable cut to the social services because we have cut, asked other departments to cut. The library cut over $200,000, and that's a, they're a pretty big social service provider themselves as far as narrowing literacy gap. And if we're, if we're cutting positions there and leaving positions open, it doesn't feel right to be giving the money to, um, other agencies to, to fill in the gaps. So, um, I guess I'll go ahead and make, uh, amend, a proposal for an amendment to the social services of a reduction of $50,000. So, I'd make it 245 instead of 295.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts, to, um, reduce the social service funding by $50,000. Carol?
Um, you know, it's, in it, in the climate that we live in right now, we have about nine families here right now who are not of means, who are seeking redress for being displaced by city action in some way, shape, or form, and not having adequate resources in the community to support them to live, basically. We would rather keep sculptures and one staff person than cut, uh, and provide $50,000 in cuts, which I would strongly oppose, to services who are providing direct need to the poorest in the City of Urbana and in Champaign as well because we do pick up quite a bit of support of people who live outside of the City of Urbana, which is probably the only thing, the very few things, that the city can really do for the poor people in the community. So, to put the public arts and the social service on the chopping block and purchase new vehicles or cars or anything else, whether they need to be replaced or not, puts priority of items over people of which I could never support. And it, it is a bad, sad day in a progressive city. People think this, Urbana's so progressive, um, to make this kind of exchange and then pass a budget with a deficit of 300-something thousand dollars. I wouldn't support the entire budget with a cut that drastically to social services.
Carol, could you take the chair?
Yes.
I...
Mayor.
I think that, um, hey, I should've raised my hand. I'm sorry about that. I think that, um, when I looked at the social service funding, I'm, I'm in favor of social service funding, first of all. But I looked at some of the requests, and some of them are, um, from the hospitals. And the hospitals are not paying the property taxes. And, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of, of giving free medical care. But let's give credit where credit is due. That is paid for by the City of Urbana, not by, by Carl. They just, you know, they do it, but they get reimbursed by not paying their property taxes. So, I looked through the social services and made recommendations to cut things that, that should be, um, funded by the hospitals. They're getting a huge tax break, and it's all funded by the taxpayers of Urbana. And I think they should put Urbana Charity as their number one recipient of charity. So, I would think it's okay to cut it 50,000, um, depending on whether that's things that should be picked up by the hospitals. And I think that's something that needs to be negotiated with the hospitals. But I think the city is in a, is in a tough financial position, and, um, that would be a reasonable request to make. Thank you. Yes. Okay, anyone else? Eric?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to oppose, uh, cutting the 50,000 off of the bottom line. There are plenty of extremely cost-effective, efficient applicants for the money who are not hospitals, uh, to justify the 295,000. I, I will, um, within the next couple of days, send to you all, uh, your consensus for how to spend the 295,000. And, um, I would think that if, if after, you know, you see that, if people have questions, that we might schedule a, if the mayor would agree, uh, an executive session to make sure that, you know, to see if we, as a group, uh, believe that the, the votes that we took individually really does reflect our, our corporate consensus on priorities. I, I think that would be reasonable to do. But I will oppose the motion to cut the bottom line because there's... And, and I, I would echo what, uh, what Carol said. It, it's always tempting, and often done, uh, to, um, move towards balancing the budget on the backs of people who either by virtue of simple poverty or by virtue of other types of afflictions are relatively powerless. And, um, and, and I believe that, um, I believe that, my, my belief is that one of the roles of government is to, uh, is to resist that, uh, that direction and to provide, um, support for people for whom there isn't other support. I know that, uh, I know that there are different political philosophies, different philosophies of public policy and government service. But that's, that's my philosophy, and that's the way I will vote on this particular motion.
Dennis?
So, what if we left the funding for social services as they are, but we chose to reserve $50,000 from, um, specific demarcation and possibly find that as a, a resource for assisting, um, people to make, uh, useful life mo, moves and decisions in the Barnes Mobile Home Park, which we have responsibility for, I think, both morally and, and... and, and economically?
Are you making a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion, that we reserve fifty, fif- fifty thousand dollars and put it into a reserve fund unspecified at this time, and use it potentially to help, um, to assist people in, um, relocating if necessary, if there's not another solution that comes up, because in a certain sense, that's a social service, um, obligation that we have already created.
Second. Okay, motion by, well, actually, we have a motion on the floor. Um, the mo- the motion on the floor is by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts, to cut fifty thousand dollars from social services, so, did you want to make that be a friendly amendment to that motion?
Yeah, I'd accept that as a friendly, friendly change to that amendment, to, uh, reserve it for Barnes Mobile Home Park.
Okay, and I would agree that that change could be done.
So, I'd like to speak to that motion.
Okay. Carol Ammons?
Um, I would not oppose reserving for, uh, emergency moving assistance, but, only caveat, I'll say that in the case of Barnes Mobile Home Park, we've paid over the cost for assistance with those families already, and I don't want that to be taken off the table, and staff absolutely needs to make sure that either that money is, that which was over the allotment is either returned to the city or allocated to the families to move them, and we do reserve the fifty thousand dollars, because we've had other emergency cases that families needed to be relocated, i.e., out in the, um, South Phila Road area, happened before, so we've had many cases where there were emergency needs for relocation, and I'm not opposed to reserving it in this budget. So, I would support that, but not earmarking it at this point, but requiring that, uh, we get the allocation appropriated the way it was supposed to be.
Bill?
I think we have a, we have a emergency relocation fund already, so, uh, I guess my, um, friendly amendment to the friendly amendment would be to reserve the fifty thousand dollars for, for, to the, uh, emergency relocation fund and use it as needed.
And I'll accept that caveat.
Um, I think it's important to note that we may not ask the people to move. We don't need the land right away, and, um, so, this would, you know, it might work out differently that we're not using it for people to move.
And, so as, as fate unfolds, we'll find out.
Okay, so, the, okay, Eric, go ahead.
I, I appreciate the, um, the concerns that have motivated the, the latest amendment to the amendment, but, um, but I think what we, what, what this amendment does is sort of, on the spur of the moment, uh, push emergency relocation up to the top of the social service agenda without a lot of, you know, consideration. So, I will, I will, I, I will oppose it, but on the other hand, if it passes, of course, I'll give you a social service budget, uh, proposed budget of your consensus that adds up to two-forty-five, if that's your pleasure, but, uh, but I will vote against this amendment and, uh, vote in favor of, uh, allocating the entire two-ninety-five to the, to be distributed among the groups who applied.
Um, I think I need someone to explain to me what your latest friendly amendment is. I've kinda lost track here. You wanted to reserve...
I think it was to move fifty thousand dollars from the social service budget to the emergency relocation fund.
Okay, so you wanna move to the emergency relocation fund, 'cause we might not need it for relocation, but...
It would just be fund balance, then, I guess, at the end of the year.
Okay, um, rather than say, "Reserve for Barnes Mobile Home Park," to move to the emergency relocation account, okay? And that's okay with the maker of the motion? All right? Anyone else? Okay, we have an amendment, um, which was just stated, to cut fifty thousand dollars from social services and move it to the emergency relocation account. Any other discussion? Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, I appreciate Mike, uh, Mike Madigan's, um, comment about, um, uh, his concern about the, um, Arts Commission funding for the, from the city, um, and I agree with Bill Brown that, that this position could've been a part-time position, in my mind. Um, there is a certain amount of organization that's required and some grant writing, but I think we could've adequately staffed it at, at a, um, a three, a half-time or three-quarter level position, and, um, I do think that a lot of the programs that the Arts Commission pursues, um, benefit mostly, um, people who are already entitled, in my mind, economically, and I'm very concerned that more effort isn't paid to, um, address, um, arts programming across the board for all levels of, um, community, um, incomes and finances and, um, um, and opportunity. But, um, but I guess, uh, I guess, uh, you know, I, I guess I'm not ready today to, to know exactly what I would like to cut in that budget, but I think that thinking about it is certainly appropriate.
Okay, but we do have a motion on the floor, so, um, if there are no, no further comments on that motion, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I guess that motion carries, then. So, we have the original, uh, motion to approve the budget ordinance, and it's been modified with fifty thousand dollars. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
We have a question for the parliamentarian. Are we voting on the actual budget at this point, or what, what is the motion on the floor?
Yes, we are voting on the original motion to approve the budget, and it has been amended to cut fifty thousand dollars from the social services and put it in the, uh, emergency re- relocation account.
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes, that motion carries. Next, we have Resolution Number 2014 dash zero-six dash zero-three-five-R, a resolution to accept the comprehensive annual financial report and single audit report of the city of Urbana for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2013, and we have Rich Henshaw, our comptroller, to explain this.
Good evening again. The annual audit for the fiscal year 2012-13, which ended last June thirtieth, 2013, is completed, albeit, albeit lighter than normally anticipated. The audit and the auditor's opinion is contained in the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR. The CAFR is online at the city website, but I can provide hard copies to you as well, if you'd like. The auditors provided an unqualified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, that the financial statements present fairly in all material aspects, financial position at year-end, and change in financial position over the course of the year as of June thirtieth, 2013. The auditors have also provided separate communication in regards to their experience with this audit. The auditors did encounter some difficulties completing the audit related to change in key personnel in finance department and certain internal controls. These difficulties were generally related to support for certain journal entries or modifications to the budget were not available, some account reconciliations had not been complete by the commencement of the audit fieldwork, certain supporting documents or work papers were not available, and lack of adequate transition to new staff regarding processes were all noted by the auditor. In order to address these deficiencies, we have implemented new procedures to address these areas in regards to review and documentation, and will continue to do so as needed. As you know, we have retained a new auditor for the current fiscal year, which ends on the thirtieth of this month, and we will work with the new auditor to address all of these areas of concern as well. I provided the city council tonight with hard copy, copies of the auditor's comments. The auditor is also available to meet with the city council at a later date, if you wish. We have submitted the CAFR to the GFOA for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which we once again expect to receive. I want to thank the mayor and her staff, and all the staff in the finance department, and all departments for their hard work during this audit. With that, the staff recommends acceptance of the FY-two, FY-twelve-13 audit and auditor communications.
Any questions for Rich? Um, Dennis?
So, we've got a list of things that they have come up that, um, looks like, uh, about nine things, maybe, that, uh, they felt were problematic. Some of them perhaps are, uh, minor, some of them perhaps more important. So, uh, not having got a, had a chance this week to read this document, um, are we then giving a clean, are we then given a clean audit by the, uh, as far as our pro- our process and our, uh, bookkeeping by the auditors, or are there caveats that they are encouraging us to work on?
Uh, somewhat of the latter. There is no caveat to their opinion. It is an unqualified opinion.
All right.
Uh, they do, however, note a number of items that, uh, they obviously are recommending that we address over time, hopefully by the beginning of the next audit, which is about to commence, or at least by the end of that audit process.
And with these, um, with these issues rising in this particular audit, um, are we still likely to get an excellence award for, um, our financial practice?
Uh, we hope so. It's more about the presentation of the CAFR and what's included in the CAFR itself, not so much what the auditors find when they go through the audit process.
Carol?
How much of the, um, of this financial report, um, that you have here requires policy change? Whether, not necessarily policy, I guess, I would say operations changes.
Uh, s- some of it will require some operational changes. Uh, we've already begun to implement some changes as far as, uh, the involvement of more than one staff in making certain journal entries, uh, the documentation of the backup to making certain journal entries. This includes budget mod- budget modifications, uh, so we've already implemented some things. If we feel we come across something that either should be added to a current policy or enhanced in a current policy, we'll certainly recommend that.
Okay, is there a motion, um, to approve the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. We, we accept the report of the audit.
Okay, there's a motion by Roberts.
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any other discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have mayoral reappointments to boards and commissions, and, um, there's a couple of corrections, um, on the, it's correct in the letter that is included here, the letter from me, but, um, on the agenda, we need to, uh, make a couple of corrections. In item D, um, Lisa Seering is Community Development Commission, and then the next, um, category is Design Review Board, and that's Danny Otto. So, those are two separate categories, so that should be E. And then under, at the top of the next page, um, there's another category, which would be F. Oh, we're getting kind of out of, out of order here, I guess, but, um, that is the CD Commission, and that's Janice Bangston. And then the rest of them, you could adjust the, um, alphabetical listings. So, we'll take them in groups, I guess, or do you want to do all at once?
Groups.
Groups, okay. For boards and commissions, is there a motion?
I'd like to actually, um, unless there's some objection, move omnibus for the boards and commissions, uh, so my motion is to move the boards and commissions in omnibus fashion.
Second.
Okay, um, that was seconded by Madigan, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Madigan. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, so this is item seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is, um, item eight. These are some additional appointments.
Madam Mayor, yeah.
Uh, go ahead.
That would've been to approve the omnibus vote, so I think we need to actually take a vote on the...
Okay, you already included that one? Is that from your motion to include, um?
No, no, no.
'Cause I did have a correction on one of them.
No, no.
Her motion was for omnibus vote for all boards and commissions, so we had to approve that.
They were all gonna be, um, done together at once anyway, so, if we, if you did boards and commissions, there's no need to have an omnibus, um, motion. We're just gonna do item seven. Is that okay?
Well...
What did you want to do?
Oh, yes, item seven is correct.
That's right. Okay, so, we'll go back and, we don't have to go back and do that again. Just say, "Item seven." All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to item eight, which is another group of appointments. GIS Policy Committee, um, Sanford Hess, replacing Bill Gray, effective June seventeenth, 2014. UC2B Charlie Smythe, replacing Carol Ammons, effective July first, 2014, and this should be added for a term ending August nineteenth, 2015, which is when Carol was initially, um, appointed. And then, um, Community Development Planning Manager, a new staff member, Michael Schwartz, effective June twenty-third, 2014.
I'll second, I guess.
Who made the motion?
I mean, who made the motion? I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Ammons. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
If I can just speak to it.
Okay, Carol?
I just wanted to speak to the UC2B, uh, replacement here. Um, I've served, uh, I came in kind of late on UC2B boards. I've learned a lot more than I probably will ever learn again about fiber. Um, it's, it's an interesting board. Um, I had a meeting this morning, they did ask, um, for me to continue to do some assistance with Charlie as he transitions. Of course, I don't choose the replacement from the council, I'm, I'm just appointed by the mayor, um, but the UC2B process is moving forward, and there's some transition phase. If those were able to, folks who were able to watch the, um, announcement that happened a few weeks ago, then there's a community partner that's coming on board, but there are a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up, of which, uh, my personal schedule does not, um, allow me to participate on a long-term basis for the next, uh, five months or so. I, um, obviously, I have a, another obligation that's requiring more time, and so, um, at this point, I've asked the mayor to, uh, reappoint another person to the UC2B board, and that's what we have before us tonight.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And item nine, we have the staff appointments, and, um, you'll notice under Community Development that we have Michael Schwartz again, who just got appointed today, but this is for, um, starting July first. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, okay.
Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any questions? Mike, or Carol?
I mean...
Diane, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for including the, um, initial dates of appointments with these names. That's helpful in knowing who's new and, and who's not, so that, that goes some toward, um, making this process a little more transparent. Um, I, for the public's information, I just wanted to let people know that there were some changes in names of positions. For example, the Information Services position is now Information Technology Manager. Um, in the Finance Department, the position of Office Supervisor has been changed to Administrative Service Manager, and, um, there's no longer an Accounting Supervisor, but there is a Deputy Comptroller, and we have an added, um, position, there's a position added to this appointment list with the, uh, Second Assistant City Engineer, so there are now a total of thirty appointees on this list compared to, um, twenty-eight or twenty-nine, depending if you counted Information Services and Comptroller as one or two last year. So, thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, there being no further business, that meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.